Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the August 9th, 2022 meeting of the Hatfield Select Board. I'll call the meeting to order, and as usual, I'll begin by reading our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the Town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the Town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open-meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open-meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. Is anyone here for public forum? John, come on up.
I'm bringing here an article that was in the Daily Hampshire Gazette yesterday, written by a lady informing the public of horses being ridden or led on a road, and how she was confronted by a vehicle making a lot of racket noises and everything, and how the driver had little disregard for her, her horse, or the other people that were leading or riding horses. And she has a chapter and verse here of Massachusetts state law. "We all took driving lessons, read the book, and know what we should do with animals when we're approaching." Can be a draft animal, any kind. And I'd just like to present this to the Secretary for notice. But in this community, there are people that do walk their horses, ride their horses. A lot of trails now are being developed that they weren't years ago, so we can walk along the road. Please be careful. We don't want to have any kind of accidents.
Right.
And also, a lot of farmers are harvesting tobacco, not only in our town but other towns. Please slow down for these tractors that are moving slow. Get off your phones and other distracted devices and watch what's going on. Some of these drivers are young, doing a summer job. We all had summer jobs like that years ago. Hey, it's cool to ride a tractor. But be careful, please.
Excellent point, John.
Very excellent point. If I could add to that, which I've been saying pretty much at all of our meetings over the last year, is, and people need to slow down. Not only distracted, distracted driving is an issue, but people are going way too fast in this community.
A second issue was, I was talking with a gentleman recently, talking about his horses and so forth, and his daughter was confronted by a person. And she says, you know, very politely, that this is a farming community, that she can lead that horse down the road and everything like that, but this woman was quite, I guess, arrogant to the fact. So, thank you.
Good points.
Thanks, John. Yes, I would echo John's concerns and urge everybody to slow down and be respectful of -- I know the road to my house, I often see horses. There's a couple of people that have horses along the way, and so it's something, I actually see it frequently in town, so it is something worth repeating. Thank you, John. Anybody have any announcements? Did you have?
No, I mean, Elvis of Ray was good.
I guess there was a lot of people attended that.
I missed it, and I'm incredibly bummed about that. Anything else?
No, I didn't have anything. Thank you.
So we just have, do you want me to make these announcements, Marlene, that appear on the agenda?
Sure, thank you.
So we do have some vacancies on some boards and committees. We have a vacancy on our Council on Aging. We have one on our Agricultural Advisory Committee.
Luckily, now we have two.
Two now.
Now we have two, that's right. And Housing Committee, there's no number after that. What is the Housing Committee?
Four.
Is that four?
Yeah, I think it's.
It's a committee of five.
Authority?
No.
Not the Housing Authority. Housing Committee, that was created as a result of the housing plan that was developed back in 2014, 2015.
And then we have one opening on the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, which is an at-large resident to be on there, which is, I'm on that committee, and it's actually a really interesting committee to be on because it's mapping out our larger purchases and projects for, they're mapped out way far in advance. So those are, if you're interested in being on any of those committees, there's information on the website. You could certainly call Town Hall to get information about those committees. That would be great. The Open Space and Recreation Plan, the link to the survey can be found on the Town website, and copies are available in Town Hall. There'll be a public visioning meeting in October. And a big announcement, that the solar project at Smith Academy is active. Something that's been years in the making with a lot of delays, like a lot of solar projects.
Five years.
But it is active, and that's exciting. Happy to hear that. So those are some good announcements. Okay, moving right along, the approval of minutes.
Make a motion to approve the Select Board minutes from July 12th, 2022.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, getting right into our posted business. Topic one is appointments and resignations. John Wilks Jr. of the Finance Committee will be appointing him to be the Finance Committee representative to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
I make a motion to appoint John Wilks to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
Second.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we have a resignation, sadly, for our Agricultural Committee. Member Bob Wagner will be resigning from that because he's moving out of town. Huge loss, because Bob has given a lot to that committee and Planning Board and various other committees. He's really been just such an asset here in town, so we're gonna need to vote to accept that resignation.
Yes, Bob Wagner's wisdom and guidance in this town over the years has been exceptional, and it's gonna be sadly missed, but it's a new chapter for him. I hope somebody will step up and be able to fill those shoes, because he's been actually fantastic in this town, trying to save the farmland and keep a balance with industry. So Bob, we're gonna miss you, but we also want you to have a great retirement, so.
Well said. So was that a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept his resignation with regret.
And I'll second it, and I echo all of Ed's statements. Bob certainly has been an asset to the community on numerous committees, for that matter, not just the agricultural committees.
Very level-headed, thoughtful member of a lot of committees, so.
He has not stepped down from Planning Board yet.
Oh, he hasn't? Okay, well, that's good. So a motion's made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have approving the 2020s.
We also have another resignation, Madam Chair, underneath bounds. Oh, we had an updated agenda.
Yeah, I know, but I.
It was Russell, also from the Ad Committee.
Russell Powell.
Oh.
He's been on the Ad Committee for a long time.
Yes.
Oh, okay, so I'm sorry. I guess I, maybe I mixed up my agenda. So we have received another, no, I have, oh yeah, here we go, another resignation, and that is also from the Agricultural Committee, and that is Russell Powell. Again, somebody who, you're right, has been really great on there.
Can I have my, go back? Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, and.
We've got it together now, people.
Yes, and so I would also like to commend Russell for his years of service on the Agricultural Committee. And I get to speak to him regularly as he walks by on his morning walks. But he's been involved forever, and I know there was something, the Agricultural Committee in general has been involved with the murals that the students at Smith Academy used to paint that ended up being on the barns. And I know Russell was there and had people in and speak to various aspects of it. So again, another person who has put their heart and soul into Hatfield and the Agricultural Committee, and he'll be missed. So I will make a motion to acknowledge that resignation, sadly.
I'll second it.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll move along to the warrant for the 2020 state primary.
Is that in the packet? I didn't, I don't.
It is.
I didn't see that.
What do you mean?
In the packet. I didn't see it in the packet, but it must be in the signature folder.
Yeah, I have it in the packet and the signature folder.
Yep.
Just wanted to make sure it was in the signature folder.
So we just need a vote on this, correct?
So I'll make a motion to approve the warrant for the 2020 Stu, easy for you to say, warrant for the 2022 state primary.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, just so that people know.
Which is September 6th, by the way.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's September 6th, and polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. There you go. Okay, police officer assignments at polling places, and this is to authorize the Chief of Police to assign available police officers to cover the hours of the state primary that I just mentioned.
Right, this is pursuant to a new regulation.
Yeah, we've never had to vote that before, right?
No, we didn't, and actually, I have it.
I'll make a motion to vote to authorize the Chief of Police to assign available police officers to cover the hours of the state primary on September 6th, 2022.
And I'll second that, but yeah, that must be something new, because they've always had coverage.
Right here, Chapter 54, Section 72, if you're interested, the town clerk provided this for me. So yes, it does say, "The board or officer in charge of the police shall vote the assignment, vote the assignment."
Okay.
To the police chief.
Okay, we can talk about that later. I just don't get why we have to do this. It's whatever. You know me. It just doesn't seem, you know, all we're doing is giving the police chief the authority to assign police officers, which they've always done in the past. So there's gotta be, you know, it must be the new statute or something, but it just seems a little crazy to me. But anyways, we're following the rules.
So Ed made a motion, right?
And I seconded it.
Oh, you did?
I thought I did, but.
Okay, motion's been made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and there's nothing we need to sign for that, it's just a vote.
No, just the vote, and the town clerk will get a record of that vote.
Okay, moving right along here, DPW report. We have a request for a water abatement at 108 West Street. Did you want to speak to this at all?
Well, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. I mean, it's an inactive account that was issued a minimum bill, so the count is inactive.
There's people that live there, aren't there?
It's inactive, no, the meter's not installed. There's no meter in that property right now. They received the bill. They received the bill that said they shouldn't offer $75 minimum use, and there's nobody there.
I'm gonna make a motion to accept the abatement of $96.13 to Jeffrey Busco at 108 West Street, West Hafu, Mass., based on the fact that there's no meter there anyway, so.
So I'll second that, but I do have a question, Phil.
Yes.
So do we know if there was a meter at one point?
I think at one time there wasn't.
Okay, I mean, how else would we?
But right now, it's inactive, nobody's there.
And it's an inactive meter?
And they received a $75 minimum bill.
Charged, which is our normal.
There's no occupants, and then they got charged the interest on it. That's why that abatement is out.
Got it. Okay.
Okay.
So I did second it, Madam Chair.
Okay, so a motion's been made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is a water abatement for 3 Prospect Street. This was discussed and voted on already.
Yeah, so there's, after some discussion with the property owner, you know, I guess it's, I don't want to say it's a hardship, but it's, I don't want to go into details about it, but obviously, there was nobody there that could have checked anyways that the water had a leak in that back barn. So after discussing it for a while with them, you know, I said that, you know, we would reconsider it, and I would recommend that we give it to them.
Yeah, so there is information that we were given with additional information about the situation.
Circumstances.
Based on the additional information, I don't have a problem myself approving this. We would need, if we approve it, I guess we need two motions, right? One to rescind the last motion, and then the second motion, if the board decides to approve it, would be to approve it on the second one, right?
I would say so.
I would say so, yeah.
Okay. So make a motion to rescind our motion from the last meeting that denied the abatement.
Second.
A motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Now, I'll make a motion to approve the abatement as requested, based on the information we received for 3 Prospect Street.
I'll second that motion.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
Well.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Phil. Oh, there's another one. Oh, no, we did, we took care of that. Okay.
Yeah, so I just want to bring up the drought. So the state's coming out tomorrow with a conference call about what's going on with the drought condition, so we would surely chime in on it, and we'll see where we're at, because, you know, they keep saying rain, 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 and we haven't had a drought, so last night you had a little bit, but so we'll see where that goes, and we'll have to set our sights if it's gonna be a mandatory water ban.
Right now, it's voluntary.
Correct. And people are complying, but with the hot weather over the weekend, I mean, we did spike, so, I mean, we're providing enough water, but if conditions don't improve, I can see that coming down the road shortly.
Now, if there is a mandatory water ban, could you explain to the folks what specifically is required?
It'll be no essential, I mean, it'll be only essential water use, nothing like watering your lawn, washing your cars, that'll be all banned. So it's a sad situation, I guess, you know, last year, we had so much rain, and this year, we have, farmers are irrigating every day, so we'll see where it goes. But even the long forecast for next week's just saying spotty showers, so.
They just always go around us, it's crazy.
Yeah, I mean, down south, the southern portion of Connecticut got it today, so, you know, I mean, it is what it is.
Okay, well, you'll keep us posted.
I surely will.
And usually, Tony's pretty good about communicating with us.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Phil.
Thanks, Phil.
Okay, Marlene, the Town Administrator report.
Just a quick update on our ARBA expenditures and revenue. To date, revenue, we just received another payment last week, and the accountant has posted that. So total revenue that the town has received is $656,011. $465,650 has been allocated for projects, and what we've actually spent to date is $264,942.
And do we anticipate roughly another $300,000? Wasn't it 900 and something?
It's 970. Right, right, the total is 971,000. They're releasing it in installments.
Do they give a projected date of the next release?
I don't know what that is, but I could follow up with the accountant to see if she knows when the next payment will be received.
I'm curious about that, too. Okay, Marlene, thank you for that.
You're welcome. Our Mass Works grant, we have expended the $2 million. Final report was submitted, and the Mass Works office has approved that report, and we received our final reimbursement. Reimbursement was requested, and we've received the payment last week.
Nice.
So that project is closed out.
Okay, thank you.
Second-floor bathroom renovations. So the specifications have been finalized, and requests for quotes have been sent out, and hopefully, we'll get that project underway shortly. So that is just for labor. The town is going to cover the cost of materials. So that's to make that ADA compliant, the upstairs bathroom.
Okay, I'm sorry, you may have said this. Did you say when those are due, the bids?
I'd like the quotes by August 24th.
Okay. Okay, and then we have a request to extend vacation time.
Extend vacation time, yes.
This comes from our Building Inspector Kyle Scott. He's been unable to take some of his time due to the lack of an alternate for his position. So does that need to be a formal vote, that we roll that over?
I don't, I don't know that it has to be a formal vote.
Trying to remember how we did the other ones.
I mean, as long as the board agrees and acknowledges that it's.
We did vote it?
Agrees.
I don't recall. We discussed all of them. I don't know if it was just an agreement or we actually voted on it, but.
Talking to Kyle, he is planning on taking two weeks' vacation to travel out of the country to see family, so, yeah, he'll be using, you know, a good portion of the time.
Right, okay. Again, as with, you know, our request to everyone who's asked to roll some over, to really try to get that taken care of in the coming year, so that we're not just constantly rolling time over.
Right, yeah, agreed.
So if he could be urged to do the same thing, I mean, it sounds like he's got plans already, so.
Well, I think a lot of it that we've discussed in the past is trying to be, you know, lenient with our employees who weren't able to travel or take time off due to COVID over the last two years, and, you know, we seem as a country, a world, I don't know, maybe Bob can speak to it better than I can, but, you know, we're having the ebbs and flows, but it's not like it was. And so people are able to get out more and do that. So we do encourage all our employees to take the time they're entitled to, and to quote my colleague, Ed Jaworski, "Take the time that you're given so that you can, you know, clear your head and spend some family time and go away or stay home, whatever." But we can't keep adding all these hours, you know, year after year, and I think this is, we're probably getting to the point where we're gonna kind of put the brakes on it a little bit.
Right.
Barring any extenuating circumstances. But I am certainly in agreement to allow this, so.
Particularly because he does have a plan to use most of it.
Yeah, right.
Yes, he does. Okay.
Okay, can I just backtrack here? This liquor license, we just signed this, right? It's in here? We don't need to, this has already been voted?
Yes, it's come back again. They need to make changes.
Yeah.
Sometimes things just go work.
But nothing is required from us?
Just signing that.
Just signing it, okay.
Updated paperwork, right?
Before that goes out, I want to.
Okay, so next, we have the wastewater treatment plant upgrades project and the engineering services contract, which I do have here.
Yeah, so that's a big project that we're going to be starting. So this is the engineer services agreement.
Right.
And just requires the vote to accept the agreement.
This was all part of the money approved?
And the chair signed, yes.
The project approved by voters?
Yes, the town has done a borrowing for it. Is Phil still here? He is here, and Phil and I have gone through this agreement.
Okay, and this is, do we need to vote it?
Yes.
Okay, we vote it, but it's just me that signs it?
Correct.
Okay.
The only question I have on this, so does that mean the USDA stuff all got approved?
That's a good question.
The area discussion, the USDA stuff has been approved, but they're waiting to see what the contribution on that side is going to be. As you remember, he said it was gonna be 20% or something of the whole 12.
Right, there was a recent email from Justin.
So they're still working with them and trying to iron out what exactly it's gonna be. But the town had to borrow the initial 12 million.
But they've been cleared to go ahead with the engineering and design work.
And I don't know if folks remember, but, you know, as Diana alluded to, the Town Meeting has already approved this, and part of this, in getting it done, completed early and submitted, was to try to get the best rate possible, not only a grant, but the US, the interest rate, so that's where all this is sort of leading for the project. So I'll make, I'm not exactly sure what I'm calling this, Marlene, to be honest.
This is the engineering, engineering and design services agreement with.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the engineering.
Right, this is with David Prickett Consulting.
Service agreement for the wastewater treatment plant.
I'll second that. I'd just like to keep on top of this as far as approvals, making sure the project's moving, that's all. So I'll second that.
Okay, so a motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I just sign where it says owner?
Yes, please.
Now, owner of a wastewater.
I know, I own this sewer treatment plant, yeah.
Nice.
How do you like that?
Lucky you.
Never in my wildest dreams.
You did hit the lottery. Take the cash instead.
I've been there, it has a nice view. Okay. Okay, so the Comcast cable license renewal update, this is just a notice, right, that there will be a public hearing?
So just, yeah, let the public know that there will be a public hearing on August 30th. That will be here in the conference room. We finished negotiations, and a draft copy of the franchise license agreement will be available very soon on the town's website, anybody who's interested in reviewing that.
And that will be August 30th at 6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m.
Okay, that's just for people's information. And then we had a little bit of discussion about the proposed Connecticut River Bike Trail, which would be down on Elm Court. And just to let everyone know, the public forum date has been set for September 22nd at 6:00 p.m. at the Town Hall, and there will be some documents that will be made available in advance of that meeting. And I know that there's a lot of people paying attention to that, so we'll make sure we make multiple announcements about that. Maybe we could even get something out on the website and maybe our social media a couple of times so that people are aware of that.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Just back to topic seven for a second regarding the Comcast cable license. I just wanted to publicly thank Marlene and John Novak for all the work and efforts they put in on behalf of the town and working with Comcast and Comcast attorneys and our attorney, so thank you both.
You're welcome.
You know, I know it, and Karen and everybody else who's involved with that, we appreciate everything you've done, so thank you.
Really, it really highlights really what an asset John is, both from, you know, what he does to.
On both sides of the camera.
On both sides of the camera, exactly. You know, he's, we appreciate you, John.
Yes.
Want me to turn the camera around to you for a sec?
No.
Okay.
We have a spotlight.
And then our last item before we head into an executive session is the Historical Commission and Historical Society, a discussion of storage options for historical artifacts. I'm not sure who's, I know, I think you're all here for this discussion. I'm not sure who wants to come to the mic. So we have, you know, there's been, as townspeople know, there's been a lot of discussion around the storage of our historical artifacts and the best way to store them until we know exactly where they're going to be on a permanent basis. And there's now a proposal from a storage company here in Hatfield on Elm Street with some pictures that look, you know, really great. The space is really great, and so I'll just turn it over to you to, if you wanted to say a little bit about this.
Yeah, so as we know, we have the stuff in Benton's, we have the stuff at Five College. Five College, I guess, has given us a deadline. We also have things that we accepted from Smith, the Sophia Smith Furniture Collection, which is really an incredible donation that we could not pass up. And that needs to, it's being stored by Smith at the moment, and they have given us a deadline of November 30th. So we really need to find places to put this stuff. I think what Diamondback Properties, Tim Baturick's place, has come up with is really a great option, because it allows us, when we lost the space upstairs, that was being used as workspace, because as we know, above the library is, there's just not any room to do anything, and the environmental conditions are really not acceptable on some days. So by leasing from Tim, that gives us both a good storage option that is climate-controlled, it gives the people who work on the collection, many of whom are volunteers, bless them, you know, a place to work and.
Access to bathrooms and.
Yes, access to a bathroom. You know, we really do have an important collection. It is important to the town, it is our history, and it is our duty to protect it.
And so this is, it's climate-controlled and it's secure, which is really important.
Yes.
So if, can I just ask, there's different options here. Is there one that is your preference?
I'm gonna turn that over to Bob. Do you want to speak to that? Because these are the guys who actually do the work.
Okay, Bob, you want to come up to the mic?
I actually viewed all of the three options.
I actually viewed all of the three options at Diamondback, but also all the other options that we, some of them we didn't put on this list, just because they were totally unacceptable for storing, you know, just insecure, at risk for flooding and moisture and no climate control. But as far as the ones that are offered by, on Elm Street by Diamondback, there are three options. The most reasonable one was unit number 117. And it actually is a flexible space that Tim is willing to carve out of a very large finished space. It would be two bays or two vents of the facility. It is on the first floor. It is immediately adjacent to a loading dock, which makes it very convenient to get items in and out safely. There are, the building itself has security and cameras all over the place. I think from the perspective of the town, you know, with our valuable collection there, we would probably need some additional security, whether it's a small camera, it's, you know, alarm system that could be used in addition to the larger security system in the facility. If you're familiar with it, it's huge, it's a sprawling facility. But it's solid, it's, the owner has put a lot of money into refinishing it and with concerns about climate control and safety. So just reviewing all of the ones that we looked at, you know, I think one of the pictures that we do have here were of the Benson storage.
Right.
And things are just piled on top of each other. And literally, it's been in there for three years, and we haven't seen.
Right, no, we understand that.
And we saw the loss.
So Bob, to get back to my question. So there's three options here. Which is the option that you're looking for?
I think 117.
The first option?
Yes, that's the one that he's going to, he's willing to enclose, block off, two separate bays for our use. It would be a large open space, so we have a lot of flexibility to arrange the items.
And now have access.
And. 117 also take the furniture you're going to be getting? Okay.
That would be.
It would take everything, right, 117?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, and.
And that's the one on the first floor with the loading dock?
On the first floor, correct. Yeah, the other one, I think it's number 102, is on the first floor. It includes heat, it's finished, it also has a loading option, but the price is much higher. And it doesn't offer us anymore for our needs. Whereas, you know, we're looking for safe storage with good access.
May I? So, but it is a little bit larger. So if, all I would say is if there's people, if you're envisioning growth or needing more area, I mean, it's 30 square feet. I don't even know if that's negligible or worth something, you know, for that larger space. I don't know the answer, but I, you know, I don't know what, if you guys have even had that conversation. I mean, it's, you know, it's, the difference is about $150 a month, right? So times 12. So is it worth that increased amount for potential growth? Or would it be something, and you guys probably didn't even get into this, or is it something down the road, if there's space available, you would go from one unit to the next? Or add on, you know, I don't know.
But if you read the difference between the two, the one that they want does not have this language. The one you're referring to has extra language that says the unit shall be leased in as is condition, and any modifications needed are to be funded by the tenant. That's not in the one above it, so is the.
That's because the 650 is already finished, completely finished. It is finished, it doesn't need anything else. It's actually the more finished space.
Oh, I see, okay. I read it totally different than that, but, okay.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's nice, I mean, if we have the budget, I think that would be.
That's the better one.
That would be very, very nice.
Well, the difference would be roughly $2,000 a year, difference.
Yeah.
Per year.
Yeah.
I mean, I, by the same time, we don't want to get something that isn't really necessary, but if there's a potential for it, and if 30 square feet makes that much difference potentially, then, I mean, you don't have to decide, well, maybe you do have to. But, you know, I'm not trying to muddy the waters, but it's like, let's just get it right the first time, because we've been.
$150 a month.
We've been waiting this long, you've been waiting this long, and we all, we want to get to the finish line. And, right, for $150 a month.
And the access is about the same. I know, you had mentioned the loading dock and everything, but the access.
It has a loading dock access.
Okay.
And I can let me speak to, we figured out what we needed for storage for the entire collection, as well as for the addition for the Smith College collection, so.
I mean, I'm pretty clear on it. I don't know how you guys feel, if you want to speak to it, but.
I find it a recommendation of either one or two, so, I mean, or 117 or 102, whatever we're calling it.
I guess I would.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Brian, whenever I look at a project.
The bigger one that's completely done and ready to go, that doesn't need, okay.
That would be.
Ed, did you want to?
Well, I think this is the perfect solution for short time, for the next couple of years. I think it makes nothing but total sense, and it gives you the capacity to bring everything together, and it's an obscure environment. I like the idea. I just want to make sure you have enough of space, as Brian mentioned, and that you're getting what you know you'll, it'll be expandable the next couple of years as, because I know the future goal, hopefully, would be a house as a museum, I guess. That might be down the road, maybe, maybe not, I don't know, but that's.
There's rumors.
But anyways, I think this is perfect for now, and it covers all bases, and it might make everybody happy.
Well, it buys some time, it gives you access, it keeps it safe, it allows you to work on the collection. It's a Hatfield business that we're supporting, and.
And I just wanted to add that this has been a long, arduous process for all of us, but for you guys in particular. But I think the silver lining is the space ultimately is the best space that is available versus partially here, partially there, partially over, you know. It can all be in one spot, it can all be worked on, it's parking, it's heated, it's air-conditioned. You know, there's no air conditioning upstairs.
The security is attractive to me as well.
Getting here was the hard part, but I think now, you know, hopefully, this is the way forward. So I'll make, I guess you need us to make, I'll make a motion to approve the funding for unit 102 at Diamondback Properties. No?
But 102 is the larger one that you said is already done. But to approve the funding, we should have a funding source.
We'll have to come out of facilities or something, and then next town meeting, we're going to have to.
Well, I mean, I would suggest we try to use ARPA funds, maybe have a discussion with the finance committee about using ARPA funds for this.
But we can make that decision ourselves.
Okay, because that was going to be my next question, is where did this go? I think Tim was hoping to have an answer by August 31st, so I don't know if that can happen.
When do you expect that you might be able to begin the process? I mean, you'd want to probably get it done over the next few months, right? During the fall, before winter kicks in?
Yeah, I think moving, I think we would want to start moving things, you know, as soon as we can.
Do you want to speak to that?
Sure, I just, one more. So like I said, you know, we were hoping to get back to Tim by the 30th, August 31st, if possible.
Did I, did I make my motion on the proper unit? Is it unit 102?
Yes.
I'm not clear.
I'm just going by the.
It's the larger, and it's available sooner?
Correct.
Okay.
And the issue is that the larger one that's available now is slightly higher price, and it's the 620 square feet versus unit 117.
No, this is, you've got it backwards.
I've gone backwards. It's been a very long, several days.
We're all using that.
The bigger one, it's available, I know. If I'm reading this correctly, it's the bigger one and it's available.
Second one on the list.
Right away, basically.
That one is available right away, and as your curator for your collection, I would love to do that, because that would allow us to begin moving things out of Benson's.
Right away?
Right away.
Okay, so I made a motion.
Okay.
Okay, I'll second the motion, and I may suggest, I think this is great. I mean, I also suggest we look at possibly maybe using some of the ARPA funds to get this moving along.
Next motion.
So that we can do that, so, and get this resolved, so.
Okay, so we're going to take a motion first on approving this move. Okay, so a motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
No.
All those in favor? Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the funding through June 30th of 2023 to be paid for out of the ARPA funds.
I'll second that.
It's August 31st of 2024.
Until June, we'll pay for it until June 30th. With the, my expectation would be that at town meeting, we'll have this conversation.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? So from August through June, we'll pay for it.
Of next year.
Of next year, we'll pay for it out of ARPA funds.
Yeah, this just has to do with how it's being paid for.
Okay, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No. No, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And. I know.
You all have.
Does the dog come with it that's in the picture? Actually, I know this dog, I know this dog, and he's very sweet, actually.
Thank you for all your work on this. Appreciate it.
No, we're done. We've already approved the funding.
The funding has been approved through June 30th, so we need to keep that on the radar screen to make sure that that's dealt with in the next budget process.
We do like to work with the finance committee on projects, but given the time factor here, and it is within our purview as a select board to make that decision. That's why we've approved it.
My last question is, who, when, Tim makes up the lease? It is to the town, or this is for Marlene?
Oh, I guess between the town, and then, right, Marlene?
Right, right. It would be the town of Hatfield. Probably, either the board, or I would sign that, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
If Tim has any questions, he can contact me, Amy.
Thank you for your diligence and creativity in finding this solution for now. Okay, so that actually concludes the regular meeting portion of this evening's agenda. So I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining with non-union personnel in the DPW, and not return to open session.
I'll second that, and Jaworski, aye.
Morey, already aye.
Zinal, aye. Good night, thank you, John.